I think you guys are on mute.
Okay, what we are doing is we are establishing the public hearing for our policy and video conferencing going forward. As always, we have to have a quorum. If we do not have a quorum, then we have to rely on our video conferencing and we had to establish policy for state guidelines. I'm going to briefly outline some of the extraordinary circumstances that are that is determined by the chair of the org and they include disability, illness, caregiving responsibilities, family death, lack of transfer to where from, weather and other significant or unexpected factors. Is there any questions on this? That's just a brief overview.
Well, this, I will just say this is a public hearing for public comment. So if there's no public comment, we don't need to adopt it as a board yet because
Right, this is prepared right input and seeing there isn't anyone.
I do have a question though, very different time. And I think the most likely thing is somebody's got a busy, busy schedule that day. They don't want to drive in from one of the outlying areas and get in a half hour getting here and then a half hour getting back. We're off instead of legitimate reason for remote participation.
Though it qualifies it's at the determination of chairman. And I see that as being maybe most likely being the one who wants to participate more. Hopefully that doesn't happen, but
Well, I think the, the wording of other significant or unexpected factors or events which preclude CDR perceived members physical attendance in a meeting gives a wide latitude discretion to the chair to determine what counts. Now, I will remind folks, and we can talk about this later, is that we will still need to achieve a forum in the room. This policy simply allows members who have participated remotely to be able to build on business.
Well, we're all open till kind of ten. Any public with still.
Well, we can close the hearing before the time and we just can't start a board meeting until ten. That's when the public notice was listed as.
Can I ask a question about?
Sure.
I couldn't hear it very well, but you, you mentioned disability. Does that have to be of the individual or a disability situation in the household that prevents a member from attending in person?
Caregiving responsibilities is a defined category.
Okay.
If needed.
So I'm really surprised that no public for this compelling topic.
Well, I didn't think it would be challenged that much. It's what depending on the depth. We didn't have a any public input for planning commission award for the IDA.
Yeah, one of the other regional planning councils held a public hearing and there was some reference to a public hearing. So just to make sure that.
We gotta do it.
Yeah. Only two more minutes and then we can call the meeting to order. Do we need to close the hearing, Craig?
Go. Um. Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Uh, like make a motion to close the public hearing.
Larry, do I hear a second? Thank you, Bruce.
Hey Jenny.
Forward. Favor.
Hi.
Hi. So moved. Thank you.
And those will be separate minutes for the hearing.
I'll also put a copy of the policy in within this.
It should probably post it on our board meeting page.
Yeah, yeah, that I could put the video policy there too.
All right, it's ten ten.
Okay, welcome everybody. Our October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two Ethical District Regional Planning Committee back from our boom and at home meetings from here on in, we have to have a forum. And if anybody has an issue, the state cannot attend and they must be on line, please call the chairman. So on that note, welcome and Mark, do we have a forum?
Uh, let's see, we should have a forum, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Eleven.
Well.
Uh, we can do a roll call. We have Bill Bruce here from Albany County. Lucille McKnight is absent. Larry Schillinger is here. Kristen Swinton this year from Reston County. We have Scott Van Depp participate remotely. Judy Bresser here in person. Jim Shaughnessy in person. McStamman in person. Jackie Stilwell in person. Saratoga County with Joe Bresso here in person. And Opal, is that you on the iPhone? Perhaps. Jason Kemper is hunting, so he's absent. I just read our new members here from Saratoga County. And Chairman Craig Warner, Schenectady County, we have Don Ackerman here in person. David Hogan camp in person. Gary Hughes is absent. Joe Landry is absent. Barbara Morrow is on the phone. So that gives us a forum.
There we go. Thank you, Mark. Um. First order and number three, we have a true member Reed from Saratoga County, and I've asked her to kind of give us some real quick overview as to who she is, et cetera. Agatha.
Morning, everyone. My name is Agatha DeAndre Reed. I am the owner and operator of Trademan's Farm and looks to perfectly work and also professional investment show jumper and horse trader at Trademan's Farm. We rehabilitate, breed, sell and train performance horses from show jumpers through the thoroughbreds that race Saratoga and I'm just gonna be all over the world. Very cool. Very excited to be here. Very excited to meet everyone.
Welcome. Welcome and a nice addition. Thank you very much.
Um, I would suggest an amendment to the agenda, which I should have mentioned to you before. And that's moving up the adoption of the video policy to the first business item. So the members participating remotely can participate in this meeting. Does that make sense? If it doesn't make sense.
Again, so, oh, that's right. Um, so people that are in the remote call crew, if you want to participate, use who so. Number four, accept the minutes to July fourteenth, twenty-two meeting. Do I have any questions? Like most of their stuff. And do, do I hear a second? Do I hear both? Forward.
All in favor, I.
Any questions? All in favor? I, I asked. Thank you very much. Okay, the financial statements through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two memo twenty-two.
Twenty, we're in a good financial position. We're tracking seventy percent budget for three quarters of the year and sixty-eight percent on expenses. We have just over four hundred and seventy thousand dollars cash on hand in the bank, which is positioned without outstanding receivables of about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We've completely transitioned our accounts from Keybag to CefQ, so that's complete now. All of our outstanding payables from our Keybag account have been settled, I believe. So that transition is, is complete.
I'm soon gonna have to change it to broadband, is it?
What's that?
They're merging CefQs.
Yeah.
Change again.
Yeah, but all our stuff at least gets to stay the same.
Yeah.
Yeah. That shouldn't have any. Do you have any questions at all? Concerns? Hearing one, do I have a motion? I move. Do I have a second? I do. Can we pass this? Right, we're in acceptance. Hi. Hi, hi. Any opposed? Hearing one passes. Item six. We have to appoint a nominating committee for next year. Um, do we have any volunteers at all? It's memo twenty-two, twenty-one.
Relatively easy job. I'll connect you with everyone. I'll give you all the contact information with the board members. And the task is essentially just confirming that the existing officers want to step up into the next role and then finding a new secretary treasurer from Saratoga County.
So we have to have how many?
Four officers. Or the current officer is excluded from the nominating committee because they'd be voting upon itself.
There's no exclusion provision by laws about who can be on the nominee, simply that the chair can name the nominee.
Well, volunteer.
Okay, we have one, we need.
You have one from each county.
Three more.
That's a, that's a good goal, but it's, it's not required.
There'll be a a prime object.
It would be the best practice.
Do I hear a volunteer from Runcle?
I'll volunteer unless someone else prefers.
Do you?
Yeah.
Do I hear one from Schenectady? Barbara? Yeah, Barbara, I appreciate it. Now we need one from Saratoga County. I guess I'll volunteer too, so that makes us four, right?
Okay.
Oh.
Greg, Barbara, Larry and Judy. Great, so we need to
Have a motion?
I make a motion.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. And anyone have any questions? All in favor? I. And opposed? And none, no motion passed.
It's good.
I can do, okay. And now we have to vote on the adoption of our video conferencing policy memo twenty-two, twenty-two. And seeing that we're all updated on that. Where to go? And do I hear a moment? Why? Here, do I hear a motion to accept? Thank you, David. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Julie? Um, any questions at all? All in favor?
Hi.
Yes, opposed? There were none that passes. Thank you. Okay. Number eight. C E D S update memo twenty-two, twenty-three.
Effectually known as SEDS. This is the region's comprehensive economic development strategy. As the Economic Development District for the Economic Development Administration, the Federal Economic Development Administration, we have to update our region's SEDS plan every five years. So the last time this was updated was in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. And it basically, it articulates regional priorities for economic development. EDA has priorities for economic resiliency and other things. Um, the last effort, you know, required to convene a stakeholder group to advise the development with the planning and the priorities in the plan. This board will ultimately be, be tasked with adopting the plan. Um, so the last plan that we adopted was kind of an island onto itself. Um, it did incorporate some of the other regional economic development planning that's ongoing through the Regional Economic Development Council. I think the approach to this update will have a more, I think, robust inclusion of the regional council's priorities into the priorities of our comprehensive economic development strategy. And really use it as a planning document that's a conduit for federal funding to support regional economic development priorities. Um, we will partner with the Center for Economic Growth and the Capital Region Chamber and other critical partners in the region. The Center for Economic Growth essentially authors the Capital Region Economic, Capital Region Economic Regional Economic Development Council. You have no idea how many acronyms. Um, to make sure there's a, there's good synergies between the two documents. Um, and we'll bring this back to the board for your input. But again, we want to position this document, not just to sit on the shelf, but to be a conduit for federal funding for local projects. And our Director of Economic Development Planning, Kate Maynard, is leading the way. If anything else to add about the SEDS process this week?
No, we're just really reaching out to our regional stakeholders in terms of additional market said what might be opportunities for jumping off points. I haven't yet been looked at more deeply in terms of documents. As Barbara mentioned, a hundred base opportunity to see it's a little synergizing the phrase synergy between the state, which is a very strong effort for regions around the state, and then the federal departments in the process. So.
Thank you, Kate. Any questions? No questions at all? When we, when you expect to have it?
Uh, we should have it hopefully by the end of the year. Uh, but we might need to extend into quarter one, but our goal is to adopt it at the December board meeting. So it's a relatively aggressive timeline.
And so I gather what you said, Kate, is you'll be reaching out to the community planners or things of that nature in, in any area?
We will. We're looking at a potential survey to reach out. We're very wary. We don't want to duplicate efforts that the African Development Council has already done. So they have thousands of individual inquiries, focus groups, et cetera. We really want to be smart, willing to take advantage of what's been done and build off of that. But we do perceive that being a major part of the effort.
Any other questions? Right. Your motion? Thank you, Mike. Do I hear a second? A second. And Joe? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Any of always been on? There are none, no motion is carried. Good. Now, we have a staff report. Item number nine.
Well, while we've been living in our virtual world, our staff here has been busy and pleased to report, as you, as you probably know, that we're returning to Hattie Valley Community College on October twenty-eighth for an in-person local government planning zoning workshop. Uh, we have a really robust schedule. The opening plenary, plenary will be on recreational marijuana and regulatory implications for planning and zoning. We have, uh, you know, our members or the participants will be able to get all four hours of required training that they would need for a planning or as only board member. And we're also offering certification maintenance credits this year for ASCP planners who attend the event. Uh, we have, as you see, a number of sponsors that are underwriting the event. It's not cheap to cater an event. And particularly more expensive after COVID. So these sponsors, uh, in addition to the ticket sales, which are, you know, relatively modest, um, will make the event essentially revenue neutral, which is great. To just thank Martin Daly, who's been the principal herder of cats and organizer and solicitor in general for the workshop. Um, I think we have a good cross section of topics and we will also have, you know, the, the sponsors will, will be there. Um, you know, tabling and making sure that people that are, are attending the conference. So we're excited to be back in person. Out of a hundred and thirty-six registrants so far, uh, one more week to go for registration or at least until next Wednesday. Um, so we should have a good turnout.
If any of the board members want to go, uh, should we go ahead and register through the registration process until we get counted?
You can register through the registration process.
Okay.
It helps us again with the bottom line for the event. But, um, so yeah, it makes sense to register through them.
Yeah.
Really.
What's that? I said we charge triple for board members.
Oh, is it triple? It's gonna be reported?
No, we're not gonna, we're not planning on reporting these sessions. You know, we looked into the AV requirements and logistics of doing that and the juice wasn't worse than squeeze.
All right. I, no, I get it. I, I don't think I'm gonna be in town and I thought I'd love to attend some of the sessions, but.
You know, I think one of our, you know, work plan items is to maintain a virtual workshop series. Opposite our in-person series. So we used to do two in-person workshops, but now I think the spring workshop will, will be a virtual offering. So those recordings, you know, live on our YouTube channel. So we have a really good library now. We'll add to that over time.
Is there any way they can get credit during viewing the those webinars?
It's really up to the discretion of the, of the approving board. So the municipal town board can determine what kind of training they'll accept. And some say no exception recordings as training for that, like I was fighting law or something.
One class that really stood out is the second one, ethical considerations for community awards. Um, sometimes the committees end up getting overlooked. They are up to speed on ethics. That one really stood out to me, Mark.
Sure. Well, I mean, it's, we always try to offer an ethics presentation and a case law presentation each time. You know, both are very relevant and for, you know, professional planners, they're required. Yeah, but it's always a good reminder and a refresher for public board members to go through that. We just said it for her. What's the, what's the ticket price?
It's fifty dollars, includes lunch and two coffee breaks.
Assuming with a lot of these presentations, it can be PowerPoint, presented by PowerPoint. Anyway, those would be available for more members.
Uh, the PowerPoint presentations, uh, we haven't reached out to the speakers to ask for that.
We do, we usually get them a couple of days before, and then if there are updates, we'll get them a couple of days after. And then we wait a couple of days to make sure we have everything and we'll archive those on our website.
So, yeah, we're excited to be back. Uh, one other event I want to put on the radar, which is also in the staff report, is our morning awards. Green and Misswood Corporation, we're hosting that at six thirty.
Uh, five thirty and the twenty-seventh.
Five thirty and twenty-seventh at Navona Restaurant, which is on New Scotland Avenue in Albany. Uh, we have three awardees this year. Um, it's going to be, you know, a small event, but a, but a nice event to recognize those people. Get some nice, nice photographs of the awardees and recognize their work to support intermunicipal collaboration, cooperation in the region. Um, and again, Martin's organizing that awards program, so we're looking forward to having a good, good turnout there. Uh, did you circulate the event right to board members yet or?
Not yet, but it's, the link is in your packet and I'll make sure to do that by email. So it's fresh in your mind.
So there's basically an event right just to get a head count and maybe we have um, a modest ticket price of five, ten dollars or something. Not sure what we decided, but be on the lookout for an email from Martin for that event. Um, one thing that we were really pleased about over the summer is the success of our future leaders and planning program that was hosted um, in August. Kate Maynard, our Director of Economic Development and Planning, was the, um, is the, that was her brainchild and she was the leader and coordinator of the partnerships that made the event's success. Um, CDC down the hall was able to pay for our staff time to coordinate the program this year. CDTA provided transportation, uh, both buses and bike shared bikes, uh, which we were very pleased about. The University of Albany's planning department also underwrote the event. Um, and the partners included, you know, the city of Troy, the city of Saratoga Springs, and a bunch of others to really expose students in a very real and practical way about the diversity of what the playing profession means or potential jobs in public service or public benefit. So it wasn't, um, kids in a room for five days. This was kids out in the field looking at project sites, talking to people who develop projects, talking to people who manage, um, you know, local agriculture operations, et cetera. So I've just asked Kate just to touch on briefly, you know, some of the takeaways from this year's program and maybe foreshadow what we're planning to do for next year.
Thanks, Mark. So just to add to what Mark had provided, it really was a great week. So it hopefully had a chance to take pictures that Mark sent out that just showed kind of an action shot. So, um, really the week was about taking students and having them engage with community leaders, finding a chance to experience transportation, either riding a CT bus, hopping on a bike share bike, experiencing walking around downtown, experiencing going out to the language reserve, picking meadows, picking farm, to really understand kind of a cross section of planning in our region, who's, um, diversity of kind of working on different things and different projects. So if we're going to, for example, site in the south end of Albany and then having a chance to see the diversity in other parts of rural, urban contexts, students really came away with a great experience. So in the exit or survey, we did get some great feedback from students. We even had one student want to do an internship in planning after the quarter move done, which was pretty cool. Um, there's all sorts of things that are hopefully coming from this. So as Mark mentioned, partnerships are huge. University of Albany provided the E-TAC space and then putting that to that new space, for example, so it's a beautiful building, a nice showcase of the campus. Um, they also provided some financial support. Um, so where we're going from here is continuing our partnerships that we really had a chance to build, strengthen those, build further ones. And as we are a regional organization, we really want to make the opportunity to build with some more students in the region. So we have a lot of outreach. The Metadias was our intern previously went out to Cindy with us, welcome Cindy. Um, so we're going to be doing a lot of the, what we realize is an important connection point with the individual districts. So we met with superintendents, we're meeting now at school. So we met with superintendents, we're meeting out of school counselors. We can touch students who really may get something out of this program. We really see that this can go for workforce development for the region. We want to keep our young people here. Vote a college for twenty-one in the region. And then also civic engagement. So just exposing them to private. Public sector opportunities in planning such a broad field. And then also how they can be engaged on an early age on our own communities. To be really a key part of the program. So we're excited by the continued feedback we receive, both from students as well as partners. We are looking at additional funding support. So C T A, for example, we felt like it might have put a bit of a strain on them. By the buses for three days in a row. So they're looking at some funding, we'll make some applications then, Mark and I, so hopefully offset some of the costs. We want to keep it a low cost program that really I think delivers a lot in terms of top results. So having the gold support, we want to be a part of that.
I want to thank for. The first summer program that we had. I gotta hold out on, and I was really impressed because it brings. The energy of these students. Back in front of us, they learn, they full of energy and it's houses that the. Program grows summers, summer. And I want to thank you for that vision that you had to pull it together and. Be very successful, even to the point that other. Communities are thinking about trying the same thing.
We are sharing our information. That's a great point. The teammates. So we are, for example, we've been contacted to speak at. The planning federation conference about flip. We've been reached out to by other flip or going flip programs around the country. So one down in Tampa, where I think they're second year. So we've had a change of ideas and we've been able to share resources, thoughts, just something to help.
So yeah, who knows, Kate, great job on the program this year. I think, you know, what's really great about it is that. Focuses on high school students who have yet to decide what career path they want to get on. And oftentimes, you know, careers in public service or public policy, you don't get introduced to them until you're in college and maybe your third year. Getting them early and getting them to attract to programs, particularly universities in our region. Is hopefully going to pay dividends, you know, for the long term in terms of cultivating the next generation of leaders in public policy. So we'll see how it goes. And our sustainability team has been very busy over the past couple of months, rolling out the new clean energy, climate, climate smart communities program. Which is the perfect yin to the clean energy communities program, yang. Both programs include a lot of technical assistance and handholding and capacity development for communities. Interested in participating in both those programs. So talking about, they give just an overview of the deployment of the program initially and where we are.
Thanks, Mark. So we've had the senior community program and nicer grant now for seven year. So it's been a successful endeavor. We had a territory. So those who were new or not familiar, we applied. Of the regions, four regions with us being the contractor that directs that whole territory. I love saying units. So it covers actually twenty-eight counties in the program. And we finished our free four-year run of that and then applied again for another five and a half million dollars for five years. We got that as well. Now we're into our, coming into the end of the second year of that program. We are three more to go. Then we applied last year also for a new program from Department of Environmental Conservation. Or climate smart communities and it's they structured that program. We're actually probably instrumental in them structuring. Several years ago and talked about how they should roll out this program. And we suggested follow this same territory model, which we think is essentially a consortium of regional agencies. That are basically working with the state to help all of this. So it doesn't regional agencies to be that, that. Conduit to state programs using all of our connections to localities and the work we've done with them through years. To advance and provide technical support for that. So B C in fact did that then. And then put the program out as a territory application, as a competitive application. And we applied in the same territory, same four regions that we got that grant last year. Starting to roll it out and prepare early at the end of last year, but it was really this year, it was, we kicked it off. So now we're going. Is rolling. We have all of our partners in play. It provides support to communities on various initiatives such as. Adaptation resilience planning, climate action planning. We do some transportation listening sections, select areas. And providing support on the overall climate smart community program. And so we're a great team here. We have Josh, Haley, Tara. And so we have a team internal plus our whole team of people in this whole territory. The other region label teams, a couple of private firms we're working with, one L, well, extension is one of our partners. So they're going to do the. Patient planning piece of it. So it's kind of, and I kind of play the conductor of this whole thing, kind of keep it all going, but it's gone great and it's really. You know, thanks to the great team we have and great partners we have. So that program with, with climate smart is one point two million and it's. So they're moving at a somewhat of a pilot program. But we believe and we've already been told by B U C that they intend to continue to fund that and going forward. And so. And it, and we believe it's already becoming, it's already been successful rolling out. So we, we look forward to basically building these two programs going forward in, in the future. And the only other piece I'll mention is we also had a second nice certificate for the past two and a half years, a cleaning and cooling grant. To promote air source and ground source heat pumps. That was a little different for us because that was targeting residents. And working with private contractors, which is different than these other two programs that I just mentioned, which are all supporting work programs. And we feel that that's more of our wheelhouse. We tried out this whole thing with working with residents and contractors. There were some challenges to that. Contractors sometimes aren't as responsive to us and we're not paying them and, and so we go, we're helping them. But we ended up far exceeding the number of leads we hoped to generate in that program. We did four hundred and sixty-one leads, I think we generated. Which went to the, to the different contractors on our team. And so that, and we just wrapped that up. So we're going with that program. But that was a nice million dollar program for three years and another successful one. But we think we're better off. Sticking with working with local governments and let others work with, with residents. But unless that's, that's a summary of things.
Thanks, Todd.
That program still exists? The, does it burn on energy anymore?
Yeah. So the program, the program went away, but it's going to exist in another incarnation. And that is through these clean energy pubs. That are region-based and they're not based on the territory. And they're essentially focused on a variety of different things to help residents. Particularly low and modded income residents. And so the affordable housing partnership of Albany. We've been working with a similar program that I can see program. This, this is going to be folded within that program. We've worked with the affordable housing partnership over the last several months. To hand over all of our materials. We gave them our, our logo and our website and other kinds of things that were separate from C R P C. That so that they can build up the work we've already done and brand that program called Heat Smart Capital Region.
Thanks, Todd. And in his spare time, while he's not herding cats in twenty, in a twenty-eight county area. Todd has also been working to develop a revised regional growth articulation. I don't know how to describe it. Other than that, it's leveraging G I S and story mapping to, to help communicate. How this region has, has been doing over the past number of years. The last in-depth analysis that Todd conducted is in the early two thousands. This is sort of twenty years later. So we hope that this first, this exercise will be sort of the first start, you know, the start of a conversation about. You know, how we're growing as a region, where we're growing as a region. The project is partially funded by the capital district transportation committee down the hall as part of their work program. And really, we want to, working together with our partner agency. Really suss out the transportation landings connection and then, you know, remind people. You know, one of these show, show people how we're growing, where they're growing. And, you know, maybe. Think about new ways to do it that are more sustainable. Results in better quality of life. So Todd's written on that and we will continue to live on that stuff as well. We have been continuing to put out a lot of our data stuff. Unfortunately, our new G I S and data person took a job with FEMA. She was an excellent employee. But she had, she had applied for a job with FEMA like two years ago and we called her. Back a couple of months ago and she was an offer too good to refuse. So we'll have to solicit that position again. We're still waiting on the census to be completed so we can do our population projection work. Martin Daly has been very busy in addition to organizing our workshops and doing other things. By completing the water belief reservoir, source water protection plan and you're still wrapping up the one for Tomahack?
Yeah, that would be, once we get the water leap as our plan blessed by the city water belief, like news and watershed, we can do.
And in addition, we are in the midst, or the city of Albany is in the midst of constructing the largest project in the fifteen-year. C S O combines to overflow for our access. Programs. So that's a sixty-five, ninety-dollar project. And there is quite a ballet of finances going through the corporation now to make sure the vendors who are constructing the project are getting paid. And the communities are applying their matching shares to the project. A significant fortune that project is grant funded, you know, as a city of Albany. Rate pair for water. I do appreciate that my rates will not go up to pay for sixty-five million dollar project in total. Which is, which is good. So thanks for all your work on that, Martin. What has been taking up most of my time over the past year is. The work that's going on at the juvenile secured detention facility that we administer. So that we are. Doing a eighteen million dollar facility expansion improvement project, ticket form with the raise the age law. The bid went out. Week and a half ago, they are due back on November third. And hopefully we will have authorization to start construction in the early part of twenty twenty-three. The construction phase of the project will be over three years. And since it involves extensive. Well, exterior expansion and then extensive interior renovations. Project phasing to maintain the facility as occupiable by the facility and detention is going to be challenging. We, we hope to get some really competitive. Bits and proposals back from prime contractors. The state is covering eighty-nine percent of the project. And the C D Y C I consortium counties, the same four counties that sit around this table are sharing the remaining eleven percent of the project share. So again, it's a, you know, testament to the significant benefit of working together as a region. So. Ressler and Schenectady counties, their total on the eighteen million dollar project would be something like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So significant, significant savings there. So anyway. Yes. So the bed count is going to increase from twenty-four to thirty-nine. There's going to be additional ability to classify use. There are different classifications within the facility and also classifications that take into account maybe gang affiliations or physical development. Because there's a great difference between a thirteen-year-old boy and an eighteen, twenty-year-old man. In the same facility. So being able to maintain more separately between those categories is, we're going to be able to do that from the facility expansion.
Just male, no female?
We, there will be female beds. There are currently three female beds available in the facility. But we will have many more options to manage population and to probably increase that capacity for females.
The funding from that county, is there agreements in place already?
Yeah. So back in twenty twenty, the county has adopted an municipal agreement specifying the cost share, not just for operations of the. Facility, but also anticipating this capital project. And so that prescribed a percentage cost share from each county. We will be executing specific in municipal agreements once we get the actual debt service schedule from the dormitory authority. That spells each county's obligation for the full term of the debt service spending. So whatever that looks like. So we'll have that actual, that actual accounting. There will be options for the, how the counties want to pay it. I'm sure that, you know, Ressler County doesn't want to have to track. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollar expense over twenty years. So they might be able to pay it once.
What about staffing? I see that there are issues with staffing. What, what's the outlook there?
So staffing continues to be a challenge and this is, this is a statewide issue for similar facilities. You'll see it in, you know, nursing. A lot of these service industries are really challenged. So in the beginning part of the pandemic. Or the middle part of the pandemic, I would say, we did a staffing analysis and determined that the. The wages in the facility were about twenty percent under market. The C D Y C I board. Working with our operator adjusted those salaries thereby making it more competitive for entry-level people to come in. However, it remains challenging and I think these challenges are specific to this context because people come in. There's an extensive multi-week training process to be able to be authorized to work with youth in a detention facility. And once about half of the, the people that go through that training process, once they get into the facility and the door is locked behind them. They decide that that's not a job for them.
But we've already invested the training.
Right. So the attrition rate, even after we get somebody in the door is, is fifty percent.
This is right and give me a little more information on the reason. And it's such a great regional service. The bid went out by Albany County. Is this a Albany County facility?
Right. So Albany County owns the, the building and the land. It C D Y C I, the consortium that administers the facility leases the building and the land from Albany County.
Albany County will oversee and structure and services management, all that.
So we have a construction manager on board, but the, they are also going to be the sole operator for, for purposes of the financing. And then the other counties will, will give, pay Albany County back their local shares. But Albany County's procurement office is, you know, signing all the paperwork. So we're working closely with them to get all this stuff done. We're really, we're really proud of the late nineties McDonald's aesthetic will continue.
Expansion. It's. Okay, is there any other? Business that anyone has?
Well, I'd just like to thank the staff, you know, continue to do great work. We brought, bring on new staff. Everyone fits well within the team here. And, you know, unlike a lot of public sector jobs, I never hear, that's not my job. So thank you to the team. So we presented the preliminary budget back in July and we proposed a status quo request to the counties. The counties have received those requests of presenting the final proposed budget in December based on.
Hearing nothing else? Do I have a motion? Thank you. Play your second.
Second.
Thank you very much. We're gonna see you back here in person again. Must be here. December twenty-first, twenty-two.
And thank you to everyone who rearranged their schedules to be here today, as you make it for. Bye, everyone. Oh Scott, I need to play your golf course.
Yeah, that'd be cool. Just so you know.